We'll call the meeting of the April seventeenth, twenty twenty five Santa Fe County Planning Commission to Order. May I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Carl Trujillo.
Dan Pava.
Here.
Wendy Pr.
Steve Bruger.
Here.
Jeremy Mia.
Here.
Jose La Cruz Crawford.
Here.
And Eric Abau.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So, please let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, we have a new Planning Commission staff. Would you like to introduce our new commissioner?
Chair, Commission Members, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Jose Louis, is it Luis? Jose Luis La Crawford. And he's very well known in the Santa Fe County Land Use Department. You know, we've worked with him. He's an architect and we've worked with him and he's really knowledgeable of the SLDC and of construction in general. So, we'd like to welcome him to the Planning Commission.
Thanks very much. And yeah, we welcome you here and this is fun and we hope to see none of your cases here before the Planning Commission.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of this agenda. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
Chair Commissioners, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, may I get a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Bruger. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next item is approval of the meeting minutes for the March twentieth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission. Are there any suggested changes to those minutes?
Please approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Bruger. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next item is approval of the meeting minutes for the March twentieth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission. Are there any suggested changes to those minutes? May I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bruger. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. We have a single case, case twenty four fifty three hundred. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Bruger. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. New business is case number twenty four dash fifty two seventy, Robert Sherwin variance. So, great. Would you, staff ready to go?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission Members. John Lovato, Building Development Services, my supervisor. Robert Sherwin applicant requests approval of a variance of chapter eight, table eight dash ten, dimensional standards, to allow a second two-story residence on a two point five zero acre parcel. Currently, the applicant has an existing residence that is four thousand square feet and a guest home with a loft, which is nine hundred twenty-two square feet. The subject property lies within the residential estate zoning district, where the base density is one dwelling per two and a half acres. The property is located at twenty-eight Estrellas de Tano, within Township Seventeen North, Range Nine East, section four, Commission District One, SDA Two. The applicant states that he bought the property as is with the two-story residence on the property in two thousand sixteen. There are three permits that have been associated for this property. Permit twenty forty forty is for a low-impact home occupation. Twenty five three nine is for a storage addition to the garage. And ninety four ninety eight seven is for an addition remodel. An NIPRA request for permit nine four ninety eight seven was unable to be located. And permit twenty five thirty nine references the ADU as a studio on the plat. The applicant's plans illustrate a guest house on the illustration provided on the site plan contrary to the plat. The request for an accessory dwelling does not meet standards, as the unit is two stories measuring nineteen feet six inches, exceeding the height that would allow it to qualify for an accessory dwelling unit, and is on an individual septic system that is not registered and does not have a leach field, which is contrary to the SLD standards of the accessory dwelling unit, as defined by the SLDC, section ten point four point two point three. Therefore, the request is for a density variance. Planning Commission Members, I want to note, that last paragraph that I read, has been re-reviewed and they have provided a septic permit with the actual leach fields and the actual location of that. So, they do have two septic systems.
Thank you very much, John.
The applicant has addressed the variance criteria and staff has responded to the applicant's responses as contained in the memo. At the February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, the Santa Fe County Sustainable Land Development Hearing Officer met and acted on this case. The hearing officer stated the application failed to meet the requirements of chapter four point nine point seven four forbearances to the density requirements of table eight dash ten that allows one dwelling per two and a half acres. The application did not set forth extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions of the property to justify granting a variance. And the spirit of the SLDC is to maintain the density requirements of the code. Staff recommends denial of the request for variance to allow the two dwelling units on the two point five acre parcel. If the decision of the Santa Fe County Planning Commission is to approve the variance, staff recommends the following conditions be imposed. Mr. Chair, may I enter those conditions into the record?
Yes, please.
And for the record, I'd like to strike condition number four, that the applicant shall provide a OSN MED permit at the time of after-the-fact permit submittal that has been provided.
Thank you.
This report and exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of the hearing record. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission Members. I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, John. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Commissioner Pava.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Regarding the original building permit and the conversation throughout the staff report and documentation about the house being built in the timeframe of nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-ish, and that there was no building permit located, could you elaborate if there's any new information regarding that? Because there's been, I'll call it testimony submitted, the hearing officers meeting that indeed there may be something or it's not searchable because it was paper and if you could just elaborate a little bit.
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Pava, so the residence is permitted and is recognized on our legal lot of record plat, as well as the structure in question, which is, was permitted as a studio. Sometime between then and when the applicants purchased the property, it was found to be converted with a loft on top, which qualifies it as a secondary dwelling, as its function is a four-bedroom.
Follow-on question to that, thank you for that information. So, it sounds like there is documentation that there is a building permit dating back to the original construction on the site, if I got that right, of the two, of the two units, right?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Pava, it was recognized by the plat, legal lot of record, as a studio. Therefore, we, even though we were unable to locate the actual permit for that, we still recognize that.
Okay. A related question has to do with how this all came to the attention of the county, that they're now requesting the variance. Kind of read between the lines in the staff report, maybe you could illuminate us a little bit more as to how this came to the attention of the county and why we're, why we're hearing this now.
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Pava, the applicant came in for a short-term rental and that's when it was discovered that it was a full-blown residence and didn't meet the criteria set forth in the SLDC. Thereafter, sorry, thereafter, we did issue him a temporary STR while the applicant went through the process of the variance.
Thank you. And regarding that short-term rental, so the applicant came in to apply for a short-term rental. Staff have indication that there was a short-term rental business happening on the property prior to that?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Pava, we, staff would have never really known this until the STR ordinance came into effect.
Uh huh.
That's the catch twenty-two in this scenario. But then thereafter, we did note that there was a home occupation associated with the property and we assumed that they did utilize that structure for part of the component of their home occupation.
I see, okay. Yeah, I noticed the home occupation license was granted, what, in twenty?
Mr. Chair, the home occupation was in twenty twenty.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from Commissioners?
Yeah, I do have a question. So, one thing I'm trying to, it's kind of a follow-up to what the Commissioner mentioned. So, with respect to this, we've got a, another unit that essentially doesn't qualify as an ADU under the SLDC. So, it's being looked at as another single-family dwelling. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member, that is correct. It is a, it was recognized as a studio. And part of that is that it has a second story, which is a loft, that didn't qualify as an, for a, for not so much a short-term rental, but an ADU. And secondly, at the time, we didn't, or thirdly, at the time, we did not know where the septic system was and whether there was permits for that septic system, which have since been provided.
Gotcha. So, because of the fact of the extra height that it has, doesn't meet the ADU, obviously the separate septic tank also doesn't meet the requirements for the ADU. Now, my question, I guess, with respect to this is with the, with the fact that the zoning allows only a single dwelling unit for two point five acre lot, if this was to be approved, does that mean that there would be no, no additional ADU allowed if, if that was the case?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member, that is correct. We do have a condition on, on the approval.
And a follow-up question with that, with respect to that, with, are there any, is there anything that would need to be recorded, I guess, or any plats that would need to be recorded, anything like with respect to this? If any, you know, whether it's denied or approved or whatnot, so that way there could be some kind of recording for what was, what gets decided here?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Crawford, we can do that. However, it will be noted in the development order or the finding of fact that will be presented to you at such time. And it'll also be noted on the actual final order of any building permit that comes through our department.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bruger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions. The first background, so the use in question is, I guess it could be categorized as bed and breakfast slash retreat. So, is it's correct, is it correct that a bed and breakfast, a retreat use, is not a permitted use by right in a rural estate zone? But it's a, it can be approved as a conditional use. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Bruger, I believe that's the fact, but I do not have the ordinance in front of me to give you a definitive answer on that. I can look into that.
Okay. If it is, is it, even if it is a, not a by right, but a conditional use, at least my version of the code has that, is it correct that if you're approved for a home occupation license, you can operate a qualifying home business in a zone where it otherwise would not be permitted by right? That might be a legal question as much as that.
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Bruger, I believe you're accurate on that. They do have a home occupation, which has specific criteria that only allows such amount of visits per day, square footage to be utilized and so on and so forth. The other second part to that for the ADU would be standalone on its own and granted where it's permissible.
So, follow-up. So, they have a home occupation license and from the report, excellent staff report, it, it's a, there's different, there's no impact, there's a low impact, and then there's a medium impact home occupations. And they were designated as a low impact rather than a medium. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commission Member.
The, and if it were designated as a medium impact, there was a, it is, there would be, per the code, there would have to be other than a minimal increase in traffic. and visitation on the property, there would be no further quoting the, the code, no further exterior signs that there was a home business. The only reason I ask that is because, at least, some of the material that I read from folks opposing the, this, this request commented on the uses that were happening exterior. So, but, but they are a low-impact use, correct?
Mister Chair, Commission Member Bruger, that is correct.
There was discussion in the staff report about, and a request justifying by the, by the consultant representing the, the applicants that this should be grandfathered in because the, the use was existing. Is, to your knowledge, prior to the implementation of the S L D C, was, was, was the zoning the same, or was it different? If I understood what the, the applicant, the consultant was saying is that it might have, the rules might have changed from before to when the S L D C was approved.
Mister Chair, Commission Member Bruger, while the rules did change, Santa Fe County prior to the S L D C was based off of water hydrology. For more likely reasons, it was, it's always remained two and a halves in this general location. This area was known as the extraterritorial zoning area, and so there was a two and a five mile. Those basically stayed the same in terms of lot size requirements, as well as many other locations within Santa Fe County.
So, density really didn't, the density controls didn't change really from before to now?
Mister Chair, Commission Member Bruger, correct, and just the justification behind that, to kind of give a little more backup to that, would be the fact that it was permitted, or what we have as record as a, as a studio, which told me basically they weren't allowed a secondary residence at the time. And as the S L D's changed, S L D C came into effect, that's when S, A D Us were being granted for certain areas.
Mister Lovato, is the word "studio" defined in either the S L D C or the previous code that it replaced?
Mister Chair, Commission Members, I'm not sure about the previous code. I, I believe it was from my knowledge, and it is in our S L D C.
So it is essentially an accessory, it's, it's an accessory structure that may have plumbing, but cannot be used as a residence, is that right? I'm just trying to understand what those requirements for a studio are.
Mister Chair, that is correct. It, it's allowed to have a, a toilet, it's allowed to have a sink, utility sink. It's not allowed to have a shower or be functioned as, or can be converted into an accessory dwelling.
And that's in the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen S L D C, whenever that was adopted, right?
Mister Chair, Planning Commission, Commission Members, that is correct.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bruger, do you have some more?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. I, I read somewhere in the report that it, I may have got this wrong, but if this, if this request were not approved, were you asking them to, or directing the applicant to take down the loft?
Mister Chair, Commission Member Bruger, we would not give that type of information. We would ask that they bring in compliance. That could be a possibility that they do so. They could remove the loft, they can do an addition. And being that their permit was done prior to nineteen, oh, to the prior, S L D C, I'm sorry, we would recognize that it's its own standalone septic system. Because we did allow A D Us back, or accessory structures, as I say, under the old ordinance, to have a, its own standalone septic system. So that would be a fix for them to do an addition, four hundred square foot, take off the loft, it's no longer two stories, meets the criteria of the S L D C.
That, so, so if this were not approved, then you would, you, you would be, forgive me for being dense. You would be asking them to take down the loft, and they could do an addition, but they'd have to spend the money to take, take the loft down, or could that be grandfathered in?
Mister Chair, Commission Members, so the request here is for density. It's no, we're not really discussing A D Us, but since it plays a factor into this, that would be their, that would be their fix. It'd be a single-story structure, which is required by our accessory dwelling. We would recognize the septic permit as it was done prior to our ordinance and granted back when. And they would fit the S L D standards, S L D C standards, because they would be still under the maximum fourteen hundred square foot as their house is four thousand square foot. So they'd be half of what they have, and they would meet the standards of the A D U.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that grandfathering questions that, that was brought up. So I understand that, I believe the last code that was out prior to S L C was the nineteen ninety-six one. And yeah, I was, I briefly looked at it, and I think it's, yeah, nothing brings up A D A, A D Us, it just brings up accessory, you know, an accessory structure. Do you recall if there are any height restrictions in that previous code? Because I'm just wondering when this was permitted, since it seems like some permits were issued, did it, did it meet the current code at the time?
Mister Chair, Commission Member Cruz, yeah, I'm sorry, De La Cruz, it would be, so the question is, would it, would the height be allowed, is what I'm hearing?
The height, and just, I guess, as a more general question, you know, since I believe it sounds like a permit was issued at the time, at least for the studio, would it have met the code at the time? And then I guess the follow-up question, because I guess there was some sort of remodel that was done, but I wasn't sure, was a permit actually found for the remodel or not?
Mister Chair, Commission Member, that is correct. It would meet, it would have met the standards back in nineteen ninety-six ordinance. As it is now, it does not meet those standards. And the permit that we tried to pull from our archives was unable to be located. But I can tell you, we recognize this as a studio, which would be an accessory structure due to the fact that legal lot of record indicated it was a studio.
Okay. And then I, I think you kind of hit something that, for me, so as you mentioned, it's more of a density request as opposed to like, you know, an A D U request of any kind. So I did not take a look at the zoning map, but is this property located near another zone, or is it kind of smack in the middle of a zone? I guess my, my question for that is, are, is there an adjacent zoning near it that has a different density requirement? Because I know sometimes there are changes to the zoning map.
Mister Chair, Commission Members, I can't tell you the exact distance from another zoning district, but it's quite a bit of ways. This general area was, again, based off the old hydrology and then converted into our new S L D C as, as the proper zoning district it's located in.
One more history question, Mister Lovato. So the S L D C, the ninety-six code, it appears that this, this was referenced as a studio on the plat in nineteen ninety-one. So do we know, so what I'm trying to understand is, was everything done legitimately in, at the time that it was constructed? Because this is not a request to construct something new. This is a request to use the existing structures that may or may not have been put in legitimately at the time for a use. So, you know, we've, we've seen this case a number of times in, with, with different properties because of the, the short-term rental pushes everybody back through a new Civ. And so I, what I'm trying to understand is, were the rules followed in nineteen ninety-one for this? And, and sorry, because it's like going back in time.
Mister Chair, Commission Members, I can tell you that we recognize it due to the legal lot of record plat. Whether or not it was built to the actual standards or what those elevations indicate on those plan sets that were unable to be located, I cannot tell you. But staff has taken the initiative to recognize the structure as a studio, which is an accessory structure in nineteen ninety-one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pava.
Sorry, John, to put you on the spot, but follow-up question to the notification requirements here. Can you give us an idea of how many adjacent properties were notified and with what distance? Remind me what the requirement is for notification, and I know we had some people submitting up their comments in opposition at the hearing officers, so I'm kind of curious to know how many, how many adjacent property owners might have been notified for this case? I don't know if it's a hundred feet, or if it's more than that.
Mister Chair, Commission Member Pava, it is required by, per ordinance that they notify anyone within five hundred feet of their property boundary, and that's for actual pre-application or neighborhood meetings and our general noticing requirements. I do have, under Exhibit H, a listing of all the members they've sent this out to.
Since I don't have that handy in front of me, I'm sorry to ask, can you give me a general idea of how many people might have been notified within five hundred feet?
Roughly twenty.
Thank you.
Commission Member Pava.
Any other commissioners have questions of staff?
Just one, one last one, sorry. So I was just curious, because, you know, obviously, single-family, an A D U, et cetera. With an A D U, current S L D C code generally has some requirements as far as like utilities being the same, you know, same access, and so on and so forth. In this situation, where it's got a separate septic field and so forth, I'm just curious, is there, what any other current S L D codes would apply to this?
Mister Chair.
It would be now a single-family dwelling, or if, if it was approved, or if it wasn't, et cetera. I'm just trying to figure out what other kind of code requirements might apply in this condition.
So Mister Chair, Commission Members, there will, if it was an A D U and we're moving forward towards that route, it would be required to share a driveway access point, it would be required to share septic system and all utilities. The structure has to somewhat be of the same in principle, or principal residence, so it has to look the same, the aesthetics have to be the same. Pitch roof, pitch roof, flat roof, flat roof. We kind of work around those standards, try to make things fit. All other aspects, as I'm aware of, meet the criteria for that, other than the separate septic system.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thanks very much.
Mister Chair, I don't have any questions, but given the questions and the issues that have been raised by the commissioners' comments, I, I would like to point out a couple of S L D C provisions that, that are applicable.
Please do.
That, that may answer some of the questions, and it concerns what is referred to as a non-conforming use or a non-conforming structure. That's the equivalent of the grandfathering that the, the applicants mentioned in their response to the hearing officer recommended decision. I, I think at least a couple of the pertinent provisions regarding non-conforming uses is that those uses or structures have to have been in existence and lawfully constructed at the, at the time that they were put in, they have to have been constructed in accordance with laws and regulations at that time. The burden is on an applicant to seek and prove the, the non-conforming use or the satisfying those conditions. Perhaps more significant is the fact that when a non-conforming use is found to exist and is established, that non-conforming use cannot change. And there, there would be some certainly issue and concern with a, a studio, even if it was deemed to be a non-conforming use, becoming a, any type of actual residential dwelling unit.
Thank you very much, Roger. I, I'm just trying to understand, you know, the word "studio" in the current code says "no shower", in the previous code, two codes ago, may or may not have. And so that's the, you know, that, that's the dissonance I'm, I'm seeing, but thank you very much. Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Bruger. Mike?
Question, just follow up on what Mister Priscino had just stated. So, to be determined as a non-conforming use, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that all provisions were met, including not just county code, but, but building code? Would that be a fair conclusion?
The phrase in the S L D C is "lawfully constructed", that could be interpreted to incorporate all, all building codes.
So, with that interpretation, then, to be, at least as, as I understand it, to be determined as a non-conforming use, then you would have to demonstrate that you complied with county provisions and that CID, Construction Industries Division, approved, approved the construction, you had a permit to do that.
Ideally, yes. Obviously, there are practical hindrances to, to some of those requirements, but ideally, yes.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, Commission Member Bruger, that is one of the reasons why we have the applicant shall submit an application after the fact permit, to ensure this gets looked at properly by both county staff and Construction Industries of New Mexico.
Thank you, Mister Lovato.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pava.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So this is kind of a hypothetical. Let's say the, the applicant lives on the property, has this studio, whatever it is, but doesn't have, doesn't carry on short-term rentals, doesn't pursue that, but pursues their business, which if you go online, shows all the kind of spa treatments that they offer. But it's, people come and go, they don't stay there. Does that, in such a situation as that, would, would they even be here applying for the density variance? Or does the issue go away, or is there still the issue, even though they're not going to use it as a short-term rental or as an A D U, but as a studio for maybe daytime activities, does the issue go away?
Mister Chair, Commission Member Pava, it does not go away. Due to the fact that Santa Fe County has acknowledged that this is not in compliance with our requirements, code enforcement will do any type of action to bring the structure into compliance.
Thanks very much. Any other commissioners have any other questions of staff? Thanks. So the applicant or their agent, please stand, anyone who is interested in speaking, please be sworn in. Thank you. Thank you very much. Please proceed. Please, please turn your microphone on, hit the button so it turns green. Thank you.
My name is Danny Martinez. I represent Bob and Denise Sherwin, owners of the property. They will be speaking on their own behalf in relationship to the business license and their purchase and acquisition of the property from nine, two thousand and sixteen, when they purchased this. Again, this is an opportunity to present what I believe is a, a grandfathering. And again, we use the word "grandfathering" because it really does represent grandfathering. I did an intensive search through the county records. I did an intensive search through the county records, I did an intensive search through the Construction Industries Division, and they don't keep records back to 25, 35 years ago, so there's no record to be found. But in my communication with the State Construction Industries Division, they recognize this building as a conforming structure. They don't recognize it as non-conforming based on height or anything. So, the reality is, is this house and this guest house were probably built between the years of 1988 and 1990. The septic tank permits were issued in 1990. So that gives you the initial stage of when all this took place. The original development code, which was very ambiguous back in those days, because it was very open, it just didn't cover what the SLDC covers or even the 1996 code covers. It basically allowed... They allowed for this type of construction to take place because it was compliant with the development code back in 1988. So it's not like we're creating something that was not approved, it was approved, there's just no documentation that you can pull out to show it was permitted. Part of the conditions is that we've been asked to resubmit for the guest house a set of plans that would be, allow us to permit the guest house, which is kind of, again, ambiguous, because if it's already been permitted once, permitting it again, we're going to do it, just because we think that we're satisfying what the county wants out of this. Again, we go back to the history, 1988, 1990, 1976 code, the SLDC in 2018. You know, all of this that took place just really pushes you back into that issue of, was it grandfathered? Well, it had to have been grandfathered, otherwise we wouldn't be where we were at. When the SLDC was adopted, it was intended not to harm properties like this, it was intended to bring compliance to any new applications that come before for this type of permitting, a house, guest house. And again, you know, it would be run through the mill when they see that, does it meet zoning, does it meet water, does it meet all the public utilities? That's a whole different game. What we're talking about is this existing condition that basically met the conditions at the time of the permitting. And again, it's unfortunate, the records aren't kept, microfiche wasn't available back then, so there's no tracing this back. Again, the commitment is, is we're willing to resubmit for a permit on this guest house. When we look at the conditions out there, the issue is really the compliance with height and the compliance with the loft. Well, again, if you look at the loft, and I think you've got pictures, the loft is basically the roof for the bedroom, the bathroom, the kitchen, and then there's a one-bedroom up on top. There's no utilities, I mean, there's no restroom facilities or anything upstairs, it's strictly a bedroom. So to think that they can go in there and just rip that out and modify it and come back in and ask for a permit for 400 square foot, it doesn't make any sense. And I think the staff report is very clear, when it states that it doesn't, it's not feasible for something like that to happen on this particular property. Again, lots were completed in 19, developed in 1988, they're legal lots of record. Whatever happens in the new SLDC is a whole different game. You can't take away what is a legal lot of record. Mr. Sherman and his wife owned the adjoining lot next to them, it's a two-and-a-half acre parcel undeveloped, but that lot is also grandfathered because it's considered a legal lot of record based on the data, it was recorded in the clerk's office. So again, we're going to go back to that whole scenario again. How do you try to deny an application that has been in existence for over 35 years? You know, we totally understand that, you know, we can make our submittal, bring it in for a permit, and satisfy that condition. Septic tank, they approved. There's two septic tanks out there, there's one well that serves both the house and the guest house. These were all pre-approved. Again, we're talking back history that goes back to 1990. Now, if I came over here and I told staff, "We want to do a house on this other lot, and we want a guest house, and we want all this," then it's a whole different game for us, because we know we have to commit into compliance with the code. And again, that's what I'm trying to emphasize, is what happened then and what happened tomorrow on this other lot are totally different things. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to just, again, stand on the ground that grandfather, and again, the word "grandfather," it's not specific in the SLDC, but it sure was specific in the 1996 code. In the 1996 code, I didn't bring it with me, I've got a copy of it, but it talks about grandfathering, because a lot of these little properties back in those days were, that's what they were, they were grandfathered properties. So what we're doing is, we're standing on the ground that this is definitely a grandfathered property. We stand on the ground that these buildings were permitted, and again, there's just no way to go back and trace permits, but we can stand on the fact that septic tank permits were issued. Everything that we needed to build these structures was built under compliance with the county code back then and the Construction Industries Division. And it's interesting, you could talk to Construction Industries Division, and the first thing they tell me is, "We see this stuff coming before us a lot, and we don't understand why they're doing that, especially that age, that long." So, I can permit through the county, I can go permit through the Construction Industries, and that should satisfy the concern of that building, even though it's very evident that it was built in 1990 or before. There's not a whole lot that can be said about this, you know, that's our ground, is, you know, we firmly believe that this is a legal conforming structure. If there's any non-compliance, there's nothing that shows that there's non-compliance, other than what the SLDC says. You're no longer compliant. Had the great opportunity to talk to Jose Martinez, he's the code enforcement officer that went out there, and his comment to me was, is, "Well, you know, the county's implemented this code, now they're, they put me in charge of going out there and finding facilities like this that they consider non-compliant." Again, the word "non-compliant" is a very ambiguous word, because how can you not be compliant when this thing is that old, 35 years? It just doesn't make any sense. So what we'd like to do is, again, we'll satisfy the concerns of the county, we'll permit the structure, but I firmly believe that everything that we've done out there is legal, and I would just only ask that you would look at it from that standpoint, that this is a legal conforming property. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Sherwin and his wife. Do you have any questions about the business operation or since what they've bought it? And I think that that's the interesting part about it, is when you buy a piece of property, anymore, you always would assume that somebody's going to issue you a disclosure statement. Well, there was no disclosure statement. There was nothing that said, "You're buying a piece of property that's not in compliance." So again, that can be a penalty against the Sherwins, because they bought it under the understanding that it was a legal use, and all they're doing is just taking advantage of it by making it useful for their business. And again, Denise will talk more about her business, if you want to hear more about that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez.
Planning Commission Chair and Planning Commission Members, I just wanted to inform you, that letter that John handed out was actually a letter of opposition that was sent in on February 10th, three days prior to the hearing officer meeting on February 13th, so it didn't make it into the packet at that time. And the former case manager, as an oversight, failed to make that as one of the exhibits for this hearing as well, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there any questions of Mr. Martinez from the commissioners? Mr. Bruger?
I think I may want to wait until after Mr. Sherwin's presentation and then ask both of you.
So I'm Bob Sherwin, my wife and I, Denise, own the property at 28 and 30 Australia State Tono. 28 is the guest house that, when we got the business license, it required another address. It does share the same driveway, and we do share the same utilities.
Please confirm you're under oath.
And I confirm that I am under oath. Thank you. Wanted to address just a couple of the points that was brought up by the parties in opposition. Once we got notice about the STR license being required, we immediately contacted Christina at that time and started the process, and as it's been continued, we've received temporary continuation of the STR. So we have been in compliance with that, and we've also given notice to everybody within 500 feet, as John pointed out, the 10 parties have been notified. And just to give a, kind of a sequence of events of that particular property, it became a legal lot of record, the five acres were created into two, two and a halves. And as you asked, what was the other zoning in that area? We back up to Sundance Ridge and Sundance Estates, which are all two-and-a-half acre lots. And the parties that are in opposition are actually condominium association that's even smaller. And so, the two-and-a-half acres has been consistent from the beginning. The other thing that is important to note is that the house and guest house were under construction in 1989 and completed in 91. They have not changed. The surveyor labeled it a studio, but it's been the same two-story guest house since 1990. That's 35 years. And they're both northern New Mexico style architecture, and so, you know, has the pitched roof with just a loft, has been pointed out. And we bought the house in 2016 from the original owners, and they had been renting out the guest house well before we did. We've been renting it out for nine years since 2016. And what doesn't make sense to me regarding the loft, granted, I get that the SDLC changed the height restriction, and first of all, it was Santa Fe Development Code, I believe, was 1996, and then the SDLC was 2018? What was, what was the, may I ask Commissioner Bruger, what year?
December, it was, SLDC was approved December 8th, I think, 2015.
2015.
So it was before you bought it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So, in either case, the structure had been 25 years old at that time. And so, we owned the Light Vessel Wellness Center in the De Vargas, and also the Love Yourself Cafe, that when COVID shut down the state, we lost those businesses and had to shut them down. And so, that's what my wife has been doing since 2006, and the wellness facility that we have on property was really just to continue with those people that really had some health challenges, and particularly the children and some people with cancer and so forth. And the wellness facility has state-of-the-art frequency vibration, light and sound kind of treatments that have had great success. The home occupational license that we applied for and received in 2020, we went through all of these same requirements, and none of this was brought up to our attention then. And seems like that would have been the right time to bring it forward, but we were approved for that license, and it has a restriction of a maximum of four people a day, and we don't even do that. So it's a very low-key, low-impact, and then it's supplemented by Airbnb guests, and it's been a five-star rating on Airbnb for nine years. It's a quiet retreat, it attracts the older clientele that are paying $200 a night to stay there, and it helps offset all the costs of everything that we're doing, and so it's not getting the rowdy young people that want to party and make noise. And we live very close, the main house is, you know, 100 feet from the guest house. So if there was noise and issues with that, we would be the first to know about it. And I want to say on record, we have never had a complaint in nine years from any of our neighbors. If they had issues, why did they, why are they using this platform to make a complaint? And they have never made a complaint, not one, to the county, to us, or any of the neighbors. So, I'm not sure where that opposition is coming from, but it's not valid. We haven't had noise, and for the people that stay there, they're going through three- and four-day detox things, they're very quiet, they're going through healing, and they're not partying. So, don't, again, don't understand what that opposition is, but anyway, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be in compliance. When we bought the property, we were represented by an attorney and our Realtor, and nothing was in any of the paperwork showing any disclosures that we were out of compliance with anything, because those, even the 1998 changed eight years after the house was built. And then SDLC was 25 years after that. So, no, we did everything we thought we could do in our due diligence to make a good purchase, and everything was permitted in 1990. This is a substantial property, a 4,000-square-foot main house and 900 and something guest house and a swimming pool. They wouldn't build that without a permit. So, because the records are not, don't go back 35 years, doesn't mean it wasn't all done. It had to have been done, and certainly was represented to us that it was at the time of our purchase. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do, Ms. Sherwin, are you interested in speaking, or I'm not sure? Thank you.
I, I'm Denise, and commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to bring a more legitimate picture of what we've actually been doing.
Can you please confirm that you are sworn?
I am, I commit that I am sworn in.
Thank you.
When we had to close the downtown center, that was the third center I have built. The first one I built, I staffed with an MD, a DC, and a nurse. That center is now booked way into the future, and it's helping so many people in this town. It's one of the greatest pleasures Bob and I have had to have provided that. I have a lot of experience in how to run a wellness center. I did not want to have a full-blown wellness center in our home, but when we had to get out of the location because of COVID, I took one of each of the equipment pieces, put the rest of it in storage, and put it on the second floor of our house, so that we could at least continue to treat those people who were really dependent on what we were doing. We, I haven't had, in the last two weeks, I haven't had more than one client there. We are not running some kind of a traffic problem, or whatever you want to consider it as. I've scaled it way down only for those that need it the most. They don't disturb anybody. I understand that they heard some noise around a fire pit that we had, could have been our daughters, could have been the family doing marshmallows, it could have been some guests. But when I found out that was a problem, no one's now allowed to use it. And I feel like we've done everything we can to be a good neighbor. I don't, I've never had, neither has Bob, we've never had anybody have a problem with us in the neighborhood, it's been the opposite, because we're decent, kind, caring people. That's why the wellness business was so important for me. So, I don't know how to actually address that anymore, but all I can say is, we don't want any ill will with anybody, and we don't want anybody being upset. So, no more firing, which frankly, I'm going to miss, but if that's going to make them more comfortable, that's why we're not going to be using it anymore. So I hope that the truth around all of this can get very clear. So I hope that the truth around all of this can get very clear. We're not a big noise problem. We are the opposite. We're not bad neighbors. We would help any neighbor that asked us for help. We're not those kind of people. So I hope that there can be a common sense approach to this, and that we can mend this so that there aren't any more ill feelings or issues around what has been frankly impossible for me to understand. So, thank you, Commissioners. Any questions?
Thanks very much, Ms. Sherwood. Commissioners, do you have any questions of either the agent or the Sherwin?
I have a question for the staff.
Commissioner Meyer.
Yeah. Based on the business that's being run out of the residents, is that being permitted? Or does it need to be permitted as a business with the county? This is for staff.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Meyer, can you repeat your question?
Yeah, so is there a business license associated with the business that they're running out of, that the county has issued?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Meyer, that is correct. There is one.
So they are in compliance with that business?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Meyer, yes.
Any other Commissioners have questions of the agent or applicant? Commissioner Paba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question regarding the home occupation license, I understand that it's a county function. Since you have these various medical treatments and procedures, were you required to have, under state regulations? Could you explain a little bit more? Because when I look at the website, there's some pretty interesting treatments and things that are maybe non-conventional, but at the same time, I'm curious to know what kind of oversight that is required for your business, whether it's here or there?
There is no oversight for the equipment I use. Everything that I use, I've been trained on and certified in. However, the first center that I opened, when I put the MD, the DC, and a nurse onboard, we could do things, we could use IVs, we could do a lot of things that I wish I could do there, but I can't because it's outside of the scope of my licensing. But the equipment that I use, I've used it on hundreds of people over many years, and they've only had positive effects, because there's safety, there's great consideration about what is happening in a person's body. We've seen even young children with stage four cancer who didn't see themselves ever growing up. And we would spend time telling them that they actually have the ability to work really hard and find ways to heal the body, because the body's amazing resilient if you give it what it needs. We've helped a lot of families. I have taken care of a lot of children with no cost to them. I didn't get in this business to make my fortune, because it's cost a fortune to do it. I did it because I care about the wellness of our planet, of children, of people who are suffering with things they shouldn't be suffering from. So I just hope that our neighbors can, can be willing to just sit down together and have a different type of relationship. I don't have any problems with any people in my life, and I felt really bad when I realized they were having such an issue with us. So I think that's all I have to offer, unless there's any more question?
Any other Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Bruegger.
So how many clients do you have at any one time in the wellness facility?
Well, what it's gotten to now is I've cut it back so that there are oftentimes nobody in the center. I only take a handful of people, and those people are the ones that I know need the treatments the most. So we've had a whole week where there was no clients. Then I may have one client on the next day, sometimes maybe two, but it isn't any more than that. Did it used to be more? When I first had to close the downtown center, we had so many people counting on us that came from different parts of the country. So I had to, you know, find my way out of that and limit those people. But now, there's not a need for any more than one or two, sometimes maybe five max in a week, sometimes maybe three. But it is certainly no imposition on anyone. So hopefully, we'll just take care of those that we still can for as long as we can.
So, thank you for the response. So at, at any one night, maybe no more than two people are, they, that they're clients, and then they stay over, if I understand, that's part of the package that you offer?
Well, no, that is not the way it was set up. We set up the Airbnb because it's, it's really a charming place. And it happened to be convenient, especially when I first had to close down the downtown center. We could treat people in there. You know, like they could stay there for the weekend, and they could get treatments, walk across the patio area. But now it's mostly just an income-producing Airbnb. And typically, it's not for a lot of young, rowdy people to come. If there was noise around the fire, it probably was our family. Before I realized it was an irritation to the neighbors, we don't do that anymore. And that's why I decided not to even have it available. So we aren't a, we aren't a big threat over there. And I don't know what else to say.
So, do you, so you use the, the guest house to accommodate the clients of the Airbnb? No one stays in the main house other than where you live?
No. It's like a typical Airbnb, anybody in the neighborhood can, can do if you go through the process. They book online, they get all the information they need. We don't invite them into the wellness facility. If someone is aware of it by a friend referring it, we will look at whether or not they need to actually be treated. And that rarely, rarely happens now.
So the Airbnb's standalone business?
It's a standalone, independent thing that we would use at times to accommodate people who needed to stay somewhere.
You mentioned that no, so no one is allowed to use the barbecue pit, fire pit, pool?
Well,
The exterior uses?
We're not allowing that to be used. In fact, it's being disassembled. It had, you know, a lot of brick around it to protect it from any kind of fire issues. We just made a decision that if it was such a problem for the neighbors, that we just wouldn't allow anybody to use it, including family now. So, and shortly, there'll be no sight that there was ever even a little fire ring there. It's right next to a labyrinth that was put in, and people used to like to come down, sometimes sit by a fire on a full moon and walk a labyrinth. It's a peaceful property. We, what we do with people, especially who've been sick, is we try to help them understand that you've got to calm down. You've got to start taking life a little bit more mindfully, breathe more, walk a labyrinth, eat better. So that's the extent of my particular life.
So there was, in some of the commentary that was included in our package, the testimony before the hearing officer, some folks were, the opponents of this were stating that they could hear music playing, people partying, that sort of thing. And what you're saying is that, that's a thing of the past?
It's not just that it's not a thing of the past, where there ever some nights where maybe, if it was family down there roasting marshmallows, whatever. But we had one beautiful party celebrating the house and moving there. And that was a lot of people, but that's the only one we've had. So I can't say that, you know, you wouldn't ever hear anybody chatting around a fire, but I do know that we would hear it if it was really bad. So now there's not an option. There won't be a way for them to sit around a fire anymore.
I would add that the, the thing that I find unusual is that the neighbor in opposition, we have never had one conversation with in the nine years we've lived there. And so I would wonder or ask them, if you had a problem or, or there was some noise, why didn't you come to us and say something? That's never happened. We've never had one conversation in nine years before. So I find it very odd, and, and I, and like I said, we live 100 feet away, and if we are noise, we would be the first ones to hear it. They're, they're more than a football field away.
Another question then. So what's your protocol to control noise activity?
Yeah, we have posted in the guest house, you know, quiet after 10 o'clock, and, and
If they go outside on their little patio deck, which is the opposite direction, but nonetheless.
So we have, you know, the, the property is, is, got a coyote fence around the entire property, and it's private and quiet, and we don't, we can't see really any other neighbors from where we are. We have a total of five acres with the two, two and a half acre adjoining properties. And, 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 you know, people have to go through certain protocol in, in Airbnb. There, they have requirements, and they leave a, what do you call it when they?
The reviews?
The review of the property, and we can leave a review on them. And so that makes it, if there, if there was anybody that was disruptive, we would leave a review on them, and then they wouldn't be able to rent from the next Airbnb place. So everybody's pretty respectful of the rules that are within that system.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'd like to stick to the facts of what's being requested here, which is the variance request. I understand this is a component of it in some sense. That being the case, there are quiet hours that the county requests, and if it is being violated, we request that they put a complaint in, and we will address that.
Oh, Mr. Lovato, the, just explanation, the reason to me that this is a density case, but it's, there's a use factor involved too. We have three criteria that we're up here for a reason, that it's a variance request, and the request has to meet three criteria, where the request is not contrary to the public interest, so that the spirit of the SLDC is observed, substantial justice is done, and then extraordinary exceptional conditions of the property. So to me, it's use factors in that. And that's an explanation for some of the questions that, that I'm asking.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Bruegger, I do agree, and that's why I kind of said it's somewhat of a part of the criteria.
Any other Commissioners interested in asking questions? Commissioner Paba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just questions for the applicant. So these other services that are rendered exclusive of, say, somebody staying in the Airbnb, they must be in structures elsewhere on the property, and not, not the main residence and not the Airbnb. So are there other structures on the property where these treatments occur?
No, the treatments all occur on the second floor of our home. That has its own private entrance that you have to walk around and get into. The equipment that I use is all safe. I've used it for a long time. And we don't have any concerns about safety at all, because we know what we're doing. So, yeah, there's no other.
So it's kind of like if I were going to see a shrink, and I go into their house, and they got like a, an office off to the side, and it's their home occupation licensed and all of that. So there are no other structures where these activities happen that's done as part of the home occupation in your primary residence, right?
Say that again, please. There's no other what?
There's, there's no other structures on the property that you're using to house equipment to do these treatments? It's in the primary house. I needed that clarification. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other Commissioners have questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I do have a question. Yeah, a couple of questions here. So I'm just looking at the, at your property itself, and I, you know, there's the main residence and the, and the guest house in question. There's another structure right next to the guest house as well, and I guess greenhouse as well, right? Could you just tell me a little bit more about what these other structures are on the property?
That structure is housing an organic greenhouse to grow our own organic food.
Is that, sorry, I turned mine off. Is that the, the kind of hoop house-looking one? Is that the greenhouse?
Mm-hmm, it's a greenhouse.
What about the other, the other structure that's nearby the guest house? What is that?
Seedhouse.
Oh, yeah. There, there's a little kitchenette area and a planting seed area that's right next to the garage, which is what you're referring to.
Okay, that's the garage then, there probably, okay, I got you. Yeah, and I guess, moving forward, I guess, that might be my other question, just, just what's your, I guess, goals and intent with this, with this property?
Well, my personal goal is, is I'm no longer doing the kind of volume of owning three different centers. I've seen a lot of people get well, and I've been rewarded by that. Now I'm only looking at taking those people, or children if need be, that really need the help, and oftentimes their parents can't afford it. I'm certainly not in this for the money at this point. I have a strong commitment to, if there's a way we can help someone who's really in trouble, then we'll do what we can to do that. But that's the extent of it.
And that's where the Airbnb does help finance some of these things, because we do treat a lot of people at no charge. And the Airbnb gives us, we have caretakers on the property to keep, keep it up, and it just helps offset the costs. So that's the, the way we use that facility.
Thank you. And any other questions from any of the Commissioners? Commissioner Bruegger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Read a letter from homeowners association, and I read your report too, before the, some of the objections have to do with short-term rental nature of the business. So maybe, I'm sure they'll say, maybe they'd object in any event. But is, for the guest house, is the use, the only use that you have for that a short-term rental? Or could it be another kind of rental, just out of?
No, it's a short-term, short-term rental.
And friends and family that come to stay with us.
Yeah, we have a lot of those.
I do have one question, if I could, for staff.
Well, let's let them sit down if, if we're done with the applicant. Let's actually, if we can, let's have any opponent speak, and then you can ask your questions of staff, because they can't leave. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sherwood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there anyone who, is anyone here who is interested in speaking, either in support or in opposition to this? So please come forward, state your name and address, and verify that you are sworn. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Terry Graves, and I'm a resident at Three Tierra Dugtano and have been since 1996. I live directly across the street from the Sherwin Retreat, a commercial property as it's being used, according to what you, what many of you have assumed tonight. I, I'm representing also the Fisher Replat homeowners, who were notified, only a portion of us were notified, about the short-term rental specifications. We've had a meeting, and to discuss, those of us in the Fisher Platt, we are all directly across from the wellness retreat. We in turn share a well. We maintain the road ourselves. The county does not maintain it. It's a dirt road. We maintain it. And so some of the concerns we've had, as we've seen the traffic increase, just to note that in the Airbnb, there are seven just to note that in the Airbnb, there are 76 room nights available between now and September at the Sherwin Airbnb. That being said, all this has been done prior to the short-term rental approval. We're very aware of Airbnb rules. My husband is a GM of a hotel who also has Airbnb certifications. We know what it takes to run an Airbnb, and how you need to be notified, and how neighbors need to be included when you choose to open your home as a business. None of those things have been done. I'm a little disappointed that the Sherwins said, we have never said anything to them. We had a person-to-person meeting on October 22 of 2024. In that meeting, my husband, either he is not, Mr. Sherwin's memory is lacking, or my husband's not memorable, but they had a meeting at the home where my husband toured the facility on behalf of the homeowners association. At that time, he brought up those concerns that all of the homeowners have had. Those concerns being the fire pit. The reason the fire pit is a concern is not because of the noise. It's because me as a homeowner had my home insurance canceled due to the fire of 87506 area, or zip code. Part of it was, in that inspection by those insurance, and it's many of us are being canceled, is because of open pits. And if the Sherwins have decided, once we brought that to their attention at that person-to-person meeting, that they no longer had that pit, it is advertised today in their Airbnb that they have a fire pit for everyone to use for marshmallows. So if that was something of a concern to them, it has been a concern to all of us due to the fact that we are at fire risk. If you haven't read, it's been in the newspaper. My husband and I are some of the first ones in that area, though we've never had a claim. So we are now searching for home insurance due to the fact of fire. So that's a big concern, and it's a big concern in the neighborhood. The other is the road. There is increased traffic. Whether the wellness center has one or two, they brought a commercial business from De Vargas Mall to my residential area. You can't tell me that moving something that had traffic in a mall to a residential area does not have increased traffic. That increased traffic is on a road that I personally maintain with my own dollars. We did confront the Sherwins and said, you know, you could contribute to our road fund. They agreed to do so. We've not ever seen anything since that person-to-person meeting in October. One of the other concerns that we had is safety. This brings a lot of strangers to your neighborhood, Airbnbs do. Sorry to say. Whether they're doing wellness or whatever, it still brings a lot of traffic and a lot of strangers. And while I am a good neighbor also, I have not contacted them, but I am obviously the concierge of the neighborhood for their Airbnb because it's a hard place to find where we live. And when the people finally get to that area, many, many times, I get the doorbell ring, or I have somebody pull into the driveway who's lost. And I'm sure those of you who've lived here and worked here know that this is kind of your refuge, your home. And it hasn't been since these kinds of businesses have been popping up across the street. And my husband and I both work, and we both work several jobs. I too work sometimes out of my home. I have a big pinsky truck parked in my driveway right now. But I don't increase the traffic. I don't increase strangers coming to the area. We've had a break-in since this has all come, and we've never had one before. Not to say that the customers that they're bringing from the Airbnb are individuals who can't afford the $200 a night, could be criminals, but it still brings people to the area that are unwanted. Some of the other concerns that we had was that we hadn't been contacted. When you are in turn doing an Airbnb, you need to be contacted. So when they were putting together the short-term rental application, none of us were contacted about that. We hadn't been told. So that may be the reason we didn't have a complaint, was in turn, we didn't know about it. I'm disappointed to see that in the administrative procedures of this commissioner, that my letter didn't make it on behalf of us, and it was just passed out tonight. That's an administrative mistake, a second administrative mistake, and this is a question. When you have a public hearing, and the public hearing notice is posted, and that public hearing is changed on behalf of the applicant, are those of us as neighbors supposed to be notified when it's changed? I'm asking that as a question.
Wanted you for us to answer questions of you?
I was told that I was told that this is the opportunity. I called the office today, and they said this is the opportunity to ask.
So what you would like an answer on is which meeting date was changed?
The date for tonight's hearing.
So when was it originally? So staff, I wonder if you could respond to her question?
So this case was previously tabled from last month's public hearing. When a case is tabled, it is not required to be republished or re-noticed in the New Mexican or to neighbors. It's notified on the website.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. I just needed to know that because the public notice has remained up there with the wrong date and time. Some of the things that I think that have been mentioned tonight that we've discussed about not only the process of notifying neighbors when you're going for a short-term rental, when you decide that you're going to do something on the outside, both in noise and in with, even using a barbecue pit, those notifications need to be done to the neighbors. It says it in your short-term rental agreement. None of those are ever notified. And so that you know, whether they're having a party at their fire pit, or I had a party at mine, and I don't have a fire pit, it's still there, it has to be a notification. None of those are being done. Some of the other things, I think, that our neighbors in the area are concerned about is just water usage. We are all in our association, under the agreement, we only can have two bathrooms. We cannot have a swimming pool. But yet, when you're bringing in an Airbnb, they have a swimming pool, they have the Airbnb, that's a lot more water usage. So those are some of the concerns that we've had. Is that when you're having a wellness center that's considered somewhat in their description, a spa, is there more water usage for the neighborhood? In an area that we are basically restricted, our five homes are all restricted in water? And while we are concerned about some noise in the area, yes, we're an older group of people who live in that area and have lived their way before the Sherwins purchased the property. We just want to make sure that it goes with the county code. That if you're going to have people in your Airbnb, and we all know that all Airbnb customers are not 50 and older. We know that for a fact. We want to make sure that we've been, that they just live by those noise codes. And I think that pretty much talks about the areas that we're most concerned about. We want to make sure that they've operated without certification on several areas. And we just want to make sure it's not setting a precedent for the neighborhood of we will do as we please, we will violate as we please, and then we'll ask for forgiveness. So because of that, we'd just like to make sure that everything is within code, that the Fisher Replat homeowners association, that we're all respectful, that they contribute to the road fund. If they in turn are going to be using the road that we use, and Mr. Sherwin has said that he has only one driveway. He has two driveways, and if he'd like to see a picture of those, I'll present it to him tonight. And that one driveway filters down into our dirt road where most of his individuals exit. Both employees, himself, and Airbnb customers. There's definitely more usage to a county road not being maintained by the county. Also, I just wanted to make sure that we keep considering it, that it was a studio. It is a studio. At one point, they call it a guest house, and at another point, they call it a studio. Did it remain a studio? If that's what it was grandfathered in as, is it now a guest house? Thank you for your time this evening. Any questions? From the homeowners association?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of
Or from the Sherwin?
Commissioner Brugger?
Yes. Thank you for the testimony, Ms. Graves. And first off, I read the letter.
Thank you.
Second, I read something in the packet that spoke to, that the Fisher Replat homeowners association is not in good standing with the Secretary of State. Is that, is that correct?
Meaning that we're not registered with the Secretary of State?
Yeah, if you don't file annual reports and pay your $10 or $20, then you're not in good standing, and you're not
We are, we are not an official homeowners association. We don't have a bank account. We do not have to have a tax filing. When we need the road maintained, one owner or the other pays for those things. We are known as the homeowners, Fisher Replat homeowners association because that's what the deed says on each one of our properties.
So I'll address the subsequent questions to you as individual rather than as the association. So you said in your letter that you, was you or someone was within 300 feet of the subject property, but you weren't notified? Is that of the, for the short-term rental use, or was that for this request, or both?
Both. We were notified for the first public hearing because we did come to that with a hearing officer. But when the change for the, I guess, when you tabled it and then moved it to, we were not notified in that. I did the follow-up work on that because the neighbors have asked me to do so because they wanted to see what the outcome was. Many of our neighbors are part-time residents and still have a concern for it. And so that's part of when I send the notification. But for the short-term rental, no. We had no notification that that was going to be considered part of the Wellness Retreat. And while I appreciate Ms. Sherwin's contribution to the health and wellness of human beings and children, part of that is relief of stress. We too, as neighbors, would like to have that relief of stress by having some of these conditions addressed.
Thank you. So you heard Ms. Sherwin's testimony when I asked about the volume of traffic coming in, how many people typically stay? Curiosity, does that has that been your experience?
There is way more impact. But of course, I've been in the neighborhood since 1996. So you can imagine that a lot of, there has been an increase of traffic. But the major portion of what we're concerned about is that it's at an edge of a stop sign. So where their property is located is on a corner, and they have two ways to get in and out of their property. That has increased that traffic, causing that, the road to really turn into an arrroyo. And the ingress of their driveway is, has been looked at by our road person several times. And because of that increased traffic, and when we get a snow or any kind of wet weather, it causes it to drain down into our area, which now has made the road have to have more maintenance. We also have one neighbor that's in our supposed association, who is directly across from them, and he in turn would like to have that area fixed because it makes the road almost impassable in some times of the year.
Last question. Promise that's the, or from Ms. Graves. The, so you've lived in the neighborhood a long time, even before this current ownership? Was the use of the property similar, you know, to what had happened in the past? And I just ask that because you've heard the discussion on grandfathering.
Correct. I, prior to the Sherwins being there, if that studio was used as a rental, as Mr. Sherwin said prior, it must have been a long-term rental. We never had any traffic in that area. And I think the previous owner of the home was there on and off, not there as often. But it surprised me to hear tonight that that studio was also a rental at the time because I know it was not used as an Airbnb prior, just from the fact that Airbnb didn't exist. And I think mainly in that area, if it was ever used for a rental, I'm sure it was a long-term rental. But I don't know that for a fact. We were not, we knew the neighbors, but we weren't social partners, and I never asked them what they did with their home.
Okay, thank you.
Do any other commissioners or Commissioner Brugger, does anyone else have any question? Thank you very much, Miss.
Once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else interested in speaking either for or against this? Sir?
My name is Brian Graves. I live at Three Tierra de Tano, and I've been sworn in. And I just had a quick comment to make. In reading the Santa Fe County, you know, documentation on the website and what have you, a variance is not to negatively impact the neighbors. I don't see how increased traffic, with somebody who doesn't contribute to our road fund, I don't consider increased water usage on people with their own wells out there, noise, and increased fire danger, even though they say they've taken their fire pit out of their property. I don't see how that does not negatively impact the neighborhood. That was my only comment.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thanks.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else interested in speaking either for or against this application?
Chair, there's nobody online indicating they wish to speak.
Thanks very much. Let's close the public hearing. Commissioner Brugger, you mentioned that you had questions of staff. Is now an appropriate time to ask those questions? Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may not be able to answer this, Mr. Lovato, but is the notification requirement for the short-term rental, is that the same as this? Is it 500 feet, or is it less?
Chair Commissioners, the requirement for STR is adjacent properties. I'm sorry, budding properties. So only properties that touch that property are required to be notified. So it was a total of four properties that were notified at the time.
Is anybody here that was, are you an adjacent property or no? Is that a yes? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other, what's, Commissioner Pava?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for staff. I'm going to get back to my question about if the variance is denied, and does that affect the carrying out of the home occupation as long as it is consistent with the licensing requirements of the home occupation per se? Set aside use of the studio slash ADU Airbnb stuff. What about the home occupation?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Member Pava, that is a total separate item. They have a license to operate their business. If the variance denied, then they must bring that structure into compliance and revert it back into a studio accessory structure is what it's labeled as.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, Mr. Lovato, if you could stay up, just a couple more questions. So let's imagine that this variance is denied. And as I understand, in order to bring this to compliance, one option would be remove the shower, right? Remove the bath slash shower. Because that is the Because that is the difference between a studio, which was the classification when it was built, and now. I'm just trying to understand the possible future scenarios. If you could help me, thank you.
Mr. Chair, what would have to occur would be, one, the applicant only utilized the top area for storage as an accessory structure. And two, they removed the shower from the actual structure.
Okay, stairs and shower or something or some certification that the sleeping area in the loft is no longer a sleeping area? It's full of cardboard boxes instead. I'm just trying to understand the future. Thank you very much. Commissioner Meyer?
Yeah, so we have quite a few issues at hand here. We have the Business Wellness Center. We have the Airbnb issue. We have water usage. We have road traffic slash usage. We have the noise and we have the fire pit. I guess the heart of this issue right now is we're voting on the variance for the guest house. We're not considering all these other issues that go into what has been brought up or what we've received through comments. We're just simply voting on whether the guest house should be allowed to remain a guest house in Airbnb. Correct?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Meyer, that is correct.
We're not voting on any other issues. It's just centered around the guest house.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Meyer, that is correct.
Thank you. Commissioners, what is the will of the commission?
Do have just one general comment, and maybe this is, sorry, apologize. Just a general comment based on the tax partial viewer and the Google Maps and I hopped onto Google Earth as well to take a look at some historic imagery, et cetera, and maybe this is something that the applicants can answer to too. But, you know, just one thing that I see here in this particular lot is that it looks like at some point in time a fence was built, maybe in like 2017 or something like that. And it does, you know, go into this other lot, the upper lot that's also owned by the applicants. So yeah, it's just, again, more of just a general comment that I do see that this particular property, you know, does appear to be more of an estate, right, compared to other properties around it. And is, you know, kind of mixed between the two lots, which I just find interesting, I guess, and something to comment for commissioners as well to be aware of, you know, if they're not, so.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, that's a lot of coyote fence.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioners? They get a motion or further discussion? Commissioner Bruger?
Little further discussion and a request for some help from staff. The... I find it very difficult to be in favor of this variance request. That it... I see it meeting one criteria. It's an extraordinary circumstance. These folks bought the property, the... It was, it existed already. But whether it's in the public interest and meets the spirit of the SLDC... I'm not there. I can't, I can't see that. And at the same time, it would be good if there was a way to minimize, not that this wouldn't be appealed, but any additional expense involved in not having the... Second floor. Altered, demolished, whatever. So is the path that you laid out there, Mr. Lovato, is that the only path or that we've got? That this is denied? And they have to do that? Or is there another alternative?
Mr. Chair, Commission Member Bruger, are you asking if there's an appeal process for them? Because...
No, I'm sure there is an appeal process. That's how it works. No, I'm asking, do they have to do, is there another alternative then to take out the plumbing or?
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, Commission Member Bruger, they can remove the second floor as a whole, which is the loft? They can convert that into a storage area because accessory structures are allowed to be two stories. There are also, they would also be allowed to remove, and part of that would have to move the shower. They would be also allowed to remove it, put it as storage, leave the shower, and do an addition of a single level floor to allow for the bedroom.
Okay.
Please, please. Yeah, so, yeah, would the applicant please come? We have questions. Thanks.
So, Mr. Sherwin, what happens if you're asked to your business to the Wellness Center? If you're asked to make these changes to the loft space in the studio?
Please turn your mic on. Thanks.
Sorry about that. To come into complete compliance, we'd have to, this is a northern Mexico house. It'd have to go from 1906 to 18 feet, cutting off 18 inches of the house, which accomplishes nothing in terms of aesthetics for neighbors or, you know, there's, nobody can hardly see this house from anywhere anyway. I don't understand why we're even fighting for a variance when this was built before the rules changed on us. Everybody here bought your properties with certain property rights. And if the game got changed after you bought it, why would you have to ask for a variance? That's the fundamental question I have.
Mr. Sherwin, from what I understand, from what staff was saying, that even before the SLDC was adopted, essentially the same density limits would have been in place. So it had not changed. If that is incorrect?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's correct. You know, they spoke to the definition of studio in 1996. This was built in the 90s or 91. I have a fully permitted house and studio, two baths, one in each. Now, my wife and I never have had anyone live in either one. But that was, that is a legitimate, because I haven't gone through and tried to get a short-term rental, my property's not been pushed through the sieve again. So I think the conditions, the legal conditions have significantly changed, as the applicant has said. So this is not, this is not cut and dried. Thanks.
Yeah, and I think the surveyor that noted it on the survey as a studio, it's semantics. It could have been a guest house, but it was approved and built and has not changed since 1990. And that was before the 1996 and the 2015 changes. And so I feel like our property rights are being taken from us. And we will certainly challenge that. We feel like we're within our rights, and I think if you, your homes that you bought with personal, not personal, but with property rights, if the goalpost was moved and the game changed, that doesn't seem fair when it was approved, when it was built. And a comment regarding the not contributing to the road, we're not in their association. We're not members of their five-member association that's not in good standing. We're members of another association because there's, we're on the corner and there's two roads. So we pay to the other one. And so, and in terms of the fire pit, this is a built-up brick, you know, three feet high that protects the fire in a labyrinth that has no trees. It's very well protected. But as we said, if that is the compromise, we'll take it down. No problem. We're happy to do that. We don't want a fire either, and we've got the same fire insurance issues that she has. So.
I think, yeah, I think the commissioner made a great point because the reality is, you know, like Lloyd mentioned, you've got a non-conforming structure, something, but you bought it that way, right? And normally if you go in and you do an addition, then that's really what triggers sometimes, like, you know, bringing things up to code and looking at everything. But it's kind of unfortunate, like you said, it's like it's going after an SCR application that caused this to come into play, right? Where now you're having to go through a variance process because of an STR application in which you're trying to actually follow the rule of the law that came into place when the STRs were required to get permits. So I do find that that is, could definitely qualify as a hardship, you know, and a situation that you were placed on that's not of your own. And to comment also on what the commissioner mentioned here too, obviously denying this variance and some of the discussions or questions that have been asked as far as like, okay, what would that mean, you know, as far as some sort of, you know, either not using the loft, turning it to storage, or ripping it down? I mean, that is certainly what I would consider an extraordinary and exceptional situation that would be a hardship to you as an owner. And again, something that was placed on you by the purchase of the house, not by the fact that you did this or you built something out of code or anything like that. You know, I also am looking at the review criteria now and considering that, you know, whether the request is contrary to the public interest. I'm looking at the property here and where it's located, and there's obviously been discussions of like who was notified or not. Legally, you're only supposed to notify the four properties, you know, around you or the direct properties adjacent to you. The majority of the properties around you are empty lots is what I'm seeing here on the lot. In fact, I only see one residence that's adjacent to you across the way from Estrella Satano. The other property you own, the adjacent property in the corners technically doesn't necessarily even touch your lot. It doesn't appear to. The 12A Comino Bonito, and that house is pretty far away. Property to the west, empty. Property to the south is empty as well. So I'm not sure whether I would agree that it is contrary to the public interest if we were to accept this variance. And, you know, maybe legal can talk to me a little bit further as far as the legal definition of public interest with respect to this as opposed to just my, you know, looking at this on a site plan and considering, okay, who's the public? You know, are we dealing with, you know, there's obviously some concern by local neighbors, which is totally understandable. Yeah, and the other thing is just the spirit of the SLDC, which obviously we're dealing with zoning regulations, one that has been in place apparently for a long time, you know. I guess we mentioned the, you know, two, one single dwelling per 2.5 acres, which was kind of based, according to Ms. Lovato, on water, right? Or like topography, right? Or I forget what you mentioned, but there was something that you used that you mentioned that that was what the reason behind this particular zoning classification, you know? And that's another thing that I'm trying to look at and consider as well is like, okay, you know, okay, this property is located here, is zoned as such. You know, the intent of the code itself, by allowing, you know, two single-family dwelling units, is it really that much different than a single dwelling unit and an accessory structure, which is allowed by the code? You know, if we're talking about, you know, water use, you know, et cetera, and everything else like that, there's really not a huge difference between the two in that sense, you know? Other than the fact that our code has regulated what a single-family dwelling is and what an ADU is and how, you know, how the ADU should be built, et cetera, and stuff, and heights and so forth. So just some of my own thoughts with respect to that.
Thanks very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Pava?
Mr. Chair, may I indulge the commission in making, suggesting a motion for this?
Please, if you have a motion to make, please make that motion.
Right. First, one clarification I have of legal. If I make a motion and want to add an additional condition regarding signs and signage, is that something I can do?
Did you ask about an additional condition regarding?
Well, condition four is going to be deleted as we heard on the record. And I have a substitute condition that regards wayfinding signage that's in accordance with county rules and regulations.
You can certainly present some alternative.
All righty. Okay. Yeah, unfortunately. Give me a minute here. In the, my motion would be in the matter of this case requesting the density variance. I want to give the case number. I don't have it right here. One moment.
Are you thinking of 24-5270?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, in the matter of case 24-5270, a motion for approval, subject to a new condition, replacing condition four, which was deleted by staff, stating that appropriate wayfinding signage shall be provided on the property in accordance with county, with the county regulations in the Sustainable Land Development Code. That's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, but what signage requirements are stipulated by the Santa Fe County? Is that even a legal request for signage?
There are none for the STR ordinance, which I believe Mr. Commission Member Pava is referring to as, you know, some sort of signage to find the short-term rental so that people aren't getting lost at the, you know, neighboring properties. But there is no such requirement for that in the short-term ordinance. You know, for the business itself, the home occupation, I mean, the home occupation is to be limited in signage overall because there is to be no sign of a business being run there. It's just supposed to be a home occupation. You know, I don't know if there's going to be any trouble putting, you know, some small signage, you know, directing people to where a short-term rental is that's on the property, but I'm not sure how helpful that would be, could be helpful. But that I'm not really sure about.
If I may, and thanks very much, Commissioner Pava, for the motion. If I may, Mr. Sherwin, what is the name of this short-term rental on Airbnb? Is it called Casa de something or other or?
I don't.
Oh, so there's not a, you know, okay, thanks. So, and do you have, do you have street number signage? Do you have, that is visible on your coyote fence adjacent to the entries? Okay.
We do, but I have one suggestion is we have an entry gate on the property that slides. And because we have two addresses, 28 and 30, and we've been leaving the gate open, the 28 is blocked. So we could reposition, and that's the one that the Airbnb and probably why it's caused some confusion. So we could certainly replace that, and it's a lighted little 28. So I could put that in a place where that I think would solve that problem.
So Commissioner Pava, is basically having more clear address signage adequate to satisfy your motion?
Now, the reason I made the, thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason I suggest this as a specific condition is this is mentioned several times in testimony this evening about confusion about addresses and neighbors having to provide directions, and I get all that. Also, I think this may alleviate some of the concerns. Whatever is permitted under code, it's a minimal sign, appropriate for the area. That's why I had mentioned it. But I'm not going to follow my sword on that if the rest... I'm not going to follow my sword on that if the rest of the Commission is not concerned about signage. My motion still stands for approval.
I'll second the motion. I just want to make sure that we're not stipulating something that we're not allowed to stipulate and create a new rule that we're not allowed to create. That's my only thing.
Chair Commissioners, can we change your signage requirement to that they properly post their 911 address at the active gate for that address? So that way that people driving by, because the ordinance does not allow signage to say STR here. But if they have a sign on the gate that says the address of the STR, people driving through will be able to see that. And it'll have to be three-inch letters, numbers, it'll need a reflective background, or it needs to be lighted, and that would identify the address that people are looking for and will be within code.
That's all good and fine. I do believe as planning commissioners, we do have the purview to insert a condition like this, but as I said, I'm not going to follow my sword about it. If I were the Airbnb folks, I would take a picture of this newly installed sign in context, and when I go to an Airbnb, and oh, my God, I do occasionally, I would look for clues because sometimes it is hard to find the space. So, yeah, that would satisfy me. Thank you, Steph.
Thank you very much. So, we have a motion and a second. May we have a, any discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pava?
Yes.
Yes.
Let Cruz Crawford, yes, it's a yes for me.
Thank you very much. Next, we have on the agenda petitions. Oh, TDR. There was going to be a presentation on TDRs. Oh, I'm sorry. Great. He's going to show slides. In order to see slides, that turns your screen into what they're seeing here, it should. Here you go. These are always a mess. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Herbert Foster. I'm a team leader in the Growth Management Department. I manage the Transfer Development Rights Program, and I'm happy to tell you a little bit about it and the status of where we're at and some ideas of where we're headed with the Transfer Development Rights Program. We call it the TDR Program. TDR, the TDR Program is basically a voluntary system that encourages landowners of environmental, cultural, scenic, or agricultural property to preserve their land by selling development rights to other landowners who can develop at a higher density in certain zoning districts where development is more appropriate. So we're asking landowners who own certain types of properties. Thank you. I was just reminded, use the mic and stay on script. So there's basically three components of the TDR Program: the sending area, the receiving area, and the administration of the system. That's what I do. The sending area basically is what happens in this process. An owner of property in the sending area, this image here is irrigated agriculture, they agree voluntarily to permanently sever the remaining rights to develop on their land. They get a certificate. Certificates literally look like this. This represents their foregoing building one house on their property. This is equal to one house not built to preserve the farm. And they sell this certificate to other developers who get to build five houses at a different piece of property. There's a density bonus there. There's a financial incentive for property owners to buy and sell these certificates to transfer density in areas where we don't want it to areas where we do want it. The incentive is they get five houses for every one certificate that they buy. There are other ratios, other provisions, if it's not, if they're not building residences, they'll do commercial and industrial and so forth. I'm sorry, I just stepped away from the mic again. And again, they pay cash or they pay money to the property owner. As the incentive, the owner can pay off their mortgage, they can buy farm equipment, they can do whatever they like. It doesn't have to be an agriculture property, so I don't want to give you that idea. But those are the three basic components of how it works. The sending area, the SLC outlines several criteria for what can be considered as a sending area. Those are a number of the overlay districts that we have. An overlay district can specify that this is a sending area. Sensitive environmental lands, those are, some examples are given as riparian habitats, endangered or threatened species habitat, or archaeological sites. Agriculture land is eligible as a sending area, and areas considered for preservation like open space, scenic vistas, natural features, and what they call areas of special character. If your property meets one of those criteria, it's eligible as a sending area where you can sell your development rights and permanently protect your property. There's certain zoning districts in the county that are eligible as receiving areas. These are the mixed-use zone, planned developments, industrial general zone, industrial light, commercial general, and all of these properties, regardless of its zone, as long as it's one of those, must have access to community water, sewer, and a public road. A little bit about the TDR process on the sending area side. They, an applicant will have, we have an application. We, I conduct a site visit. I write a qualification report. A qualification report is a non-binding agreement between the county and the property owner about their intent and an estimate of the number of certificates that they're probably going to get based on what their intent is. We want to know at that point, are they planning on subdividing, on developing, et cetera. There is a plat that is required that identifies the sending area and a buildable area, and it permanently protects all of the land from future development. The TDR agreement is approved by the county commissioners, and after that commission hearing, if they approve it, we, I print and we issue certificates. All these documents, the certificates and the agreement and the plat get recorded, and at that point, the land is permanently protected. We issue the signed certificates, and they can sell them, they can do whatever they want with them. The receiving process, a property owner, presumably a developer, would buy them at whatever market price they can get. They can barter, they can trade. They apply for a development permit application just as they would any other application. TDRs do not trigger any kind of special hearing process. If your application requires a public hearing, it requires a public hearing if it has TDRs or not. TDRs do not require any kind of special development review. And then, once the development proposal is approved, it all gets certified, and we stamp redeemed on these, and it's done. They're redeemed. Any questions thus far?
I have a question. So if some rights are transferred, are sent somewhere, and subsequently the same or future property owner, do they have the ability to receive a different development right? Or once it's severed, it's, that's it for the life of everybody here?
It is permanent, and a single property cannot be a sending area and a receiving area at the same time.
But even two years later, five years later, 10 years later, once the rights are severed, there's no way to get those rights back. Is that correct?
It is correct. It's permanent.
Okay, thank you.
Permanent.
Please.
So, say I buy, I'm a developer. So say I buy TDRs. I'm going to do, I'm going to use that to increase the density in the subdivision that I would otherwise develop. So, can I be denied? Is my approval assured? Or do I still have to go through the approval process? What happens if my request, subdivision request is denied, or conditions are onerous, and I don't want to go through with it?
So, just to make, just to make sure. So, conditions other than density. So, if, for example, the thing falls apart because of some other condition that is too, you know, you need too much infrastructure, other than density? Thanks.
Yes.
I got to be honest, I'm not certain I completely understand the question, the...
I got you.
Okay.
Chair Commissioners, so the TDR certificates are requirement at the time of recording the plat. So after the final plat, when they go to record, they will have to have TDR certificates in their hands. So the developer can either A, purchase them before they go to BCC and get approval. If they get denied, they still hold the certificates. They can be used for another project in a receiving area, or they can wait until they have BCC final plat approval and then come and buy the certificates, present them to us at the time of recordation of the plat.
I'm kind of with you. Bear with me.
Sure.
So, I'm a developer, and I, this allows me to do five units an acre rather than two units an acre. So, I go through all the process. I'm preparing my plats, doing the engineering. I would, I'd be really upset even if, you know, if I wasn't approved. So, whether I bought the TDR before, or I guess it'd be a conditional, you'd close on it after.
Correct. I see what you're saying. Most of the time, they come in for conceptual, then preliminary and final separately. So at the time of conceptual, they will be going to BCC. BCC can sit there and tell them, we disagree with your density, we think you have too many lots, we want you to do this. At that point in time, the developer has the opportunity to change it and see, does it still make money to meet what they are asking me to do? If not, they can abandon the project then, or they can keep moving forward. Very few times have we ever had a subdivision go forward for final plat approval and BCC not approve it because they have seen it at least twice before.
Okay, got it.
So, question from my end of stuff, because I'm just curious about this, too. So, we're talking about the sending portion of it, right, is a density scenario that a particular land has, right? So like, say it's one dwelling unit per two acres or something like that. Somebody has a four-acre lot. They can sell or transfer that two acres or whatnot that they would have been able to build the one dwelling in. Is that correct?
The number of certificates is based on the zoning and the size of the property.
Correct.
So if one acre is allowed one house, and they can, they can get one certificate. 10 acres are allowed 10 houses, they can get 10 certificates. So it's based on the zoning and the size of the property.
Yeah, on the zoning. And are there any restrictions, I guess, into what can be transferred? Like, for instance, there are a lot of lots that have non-buildable areas or are in flood zone, et cetera. Can somebody still transfer that portion of that land as a, as part of the, for the certificate?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the owner does not have to sever all the development rights on all the property all at the same time. They can set aside areas within the plat that are still developable or areas that are not subject to the restrictions of the agreement.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Some frequently asked questions. There are many. These are just some of the more frequently ones. Does, on the sending side, do you still own your land? Yes, you do. You're not giving up ownership of the property. You retain ownership, you're just agreeing voluntarily to permanently not develop it anymore. How does the TDR change the zoning? No, that does not change the zoning on either side, sending or receiving. Is it permanent? Yes, it absolutely is. How much is a certificate worth? It's worth what everyone, anyone is willing to pay for it. We have a, well, you have to sever all of the development rights on my property? No. If I'm allowed to build 10, I can agree to retain the right to build two and sell eight, for example. So I don't have to do that for all of the property. I can retain right to develop, and that's identified in those areas on the plat and in the agreement. Is the TDR the same as a conservation easement? No, it's a different legal mechanism, but it really has the same outcome to permanently protect a property from development and with different financial incentives. With the TDR, you have to, you're selling certificates at the, at the free market for whatever price you can get. A conservation easement, there's before and after appraisals and tax benefits that come with that. So slightly different legal mechanisms and costs to participate and different risks. What can I build with a TDR certificate? I mentioned a developer who owns them can build five additional homes with each certificate that they have. They can use different numbers of certificates for different setbacks and lot sizes and building heights, so they can achieve the greater density with the number of certificates that they purchase. Where can I go to buy and sell TDR certificates? In your packet, I think the very, the very last sheet in your packet has a screenshot of the TDR marketplace. It's the county's website where it's kind of the central place to go for buyers and sellers to learn what kind of certificates are for sale or would be coming up for sale. What about water rights? Say, what about water rights? The ordinance does allow a property owner to permanently agree to retain their water rights on their property for in exchange for a certificate. One acre foot of water is equal to, will get you one certificate.
May I ask one more not frequently asked question?
Please.
What does the assessor do with regard to the taxable valuation of the land once the rights have been severed? Are those assessed at the same general amount?
Can't really speak for the assessor. I do know that I'm required to notify the assessor whenever there are, a TDR agreement is in place for a sending area. I can't, I can't say exactly how they, how they would or would not respond. I know there are exemptions and procedures they go through to evaluate and reevaluate. But I know that agriculture, for example, is also the least taxed type of property, and they have limits on how much they can increase and so forth. But so far, frankly, for the few properties that we have, I don't know of any, of any real effect on property taxes.
Water rights question. So if I'm selling, if I'm sending TDR, but I can still retain my water rights, is that what you said?
Mr. Chair, I got to remind myself, Mr. Chair Commissioners, you don't have to do anything with your water rights. It's just, it's just an option if you happen to own them.
But you can retain them even if you sell your development rights?
Correct.
So you can sell those, too?
You can sell the, the development rights to the property and the water rights, or just one or the other.
Okay. Thank you.
We have had a lot of discussion about water rights and it's, the legal staff is still discussing all the particulars of how that works. It becomes very, very complicated very, very quickly.
Yeah, that was my follow-up question with that, but I think I got the answer. But essentially, with these transfer development rights, you're dealing with density that you can sell, right, for development? As you mentioned, you can also sell water rights as well, correct?
You're not selling water rights, you're agreeing to never sell them?
To never use them.
To not use, to not sell them, correct.
Yeah, which is interesting, because I mean, there's the whole thing with respect to beneficial use with water rights, et cetera. So I'm just kind of curious how that's been handled with respect to the water engineer and how they've been looking at this program with respect to that as well.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we're, the legal department is looking at that right now.
Yeah, okay. Okay, interesting.
So some are the TDR program of where we are today. Uh, three owners have participated. This is on the sending side. Three owners have agreed to permanently, uh, protect their property. There are four different properties. Uh, these are images of, of the three. You can see in a ranch will be Viejo, uh, Glorietta, and, uh, calling it Dalton Canyon. In the upper right-hand corner of that Dalton Canyon, you can see a little blue dot. That, that's two, two, uh, one-acre property, so... Between three owners, there have been four different properties, uh, in the, in the program, uh, for 11 certificates. Since then, four of them have actually been sold to another owner. Um, she's gonna hold on to them. Uh, right now, as, well, as of, uh, this month, uh, four certificates are on sale on the TDR marketplace. And a total of 216 acres have been preserved, uh, since the program started. I didn't have anything to do with these, but I, I hope to, uh, more in the future. Uh, the county is also participating in the TDR program. The county owns several open space properties. The, uh, BCC, by the recommendation of the COOPAC, the county's, uh, open space, uh, committee, recommended that the county participate and sever its development rights on 16 properties that it owns as a pilot project. And we've been moving forward with that process. As of just the other day, we have 28 TDR certificates, uh, in the bank. They're not for sale yet because the commission of the BCC, we're gonna be asking them within the next few months to set the price for that. There's a number of other, uh, properties, um, coming down the pipe that we're gonna be severing those development rights. So the county is participating. And, uh, we participate not only in the open space program, but what's called the TDR Bank. The TDR Bank is essentially three things. It's a website, um, it's a line item in our budget for us, the county, to buy and sell certificates. The purpose of the county retaining, uh, getting these certificates is so the county can sell them, put the money in the TDR Bank and use that money to buy certificates elsewhere, to preserve more land and a way to stimulate demand in the market and to stabilize the price. So those are the basic functions of the bank, that, that process of buying and selling, uh, the county's TDR certificates.
Question.
Thank you.
Uh, so, you, hmm, how do you determine the price for the, hmm, the TDR then that you're selling? Because, and does the state weigh in on this at all? Because if you have any property, you need, don't you need to sell it at market value? So, um, how do you determine mark, market value? And, uh, do you have to check with anybody at the state?
Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioner, the, uh, the state has, uh, enabling legislation. They basically say local governments can do a TDR program. Been working with procurement and, and legal, and I work with the county staff, a work group about the procurement procedures, uh, on, on the county and how to precisely process and administer the bank, meaning, set a price. We've, uh, just signed a consultant contract just the other day. Uh, so we're gonna get started with, uh, an expert nationally in TDRs. He's an economist, gonna help us determine the price and give us a methodology every year to, um, to, uh, to update the price. The commission updates the price. So the precise method that we're gonna go through, I can't quite say. This was studied in 16 and 17. A report for the county, they did what they call an internal rate of return, uh, calculation, uh, under, under different scenarios to come up with what they thought a developer would be willing to pay for a certificate. Uh, that was some numbers of years, some number of years ago. The market has changed quite a bit. The county, uh, changed the ordinance to allow one certificate, used to get you four houses, now it gets you five. So some of those dynamics have changed and we're, we're thankfully hiring some help to help us, uh, figure out precisely that, that method. And we are looking, we have looked into the, the state procurement requirements for such a, a kind of property. So nothing final, but we're aware of that and we're, we're tightening up that process right now.
Thanks. So, so, yeah, so it's a, it's basically goes through an open procurement. So it's basically just going to be, you'll set a process where people will, will respond and you'll then find out what those are. I have a question about the, so the, the 28 that the county through open space has. So those can, those cannot be sold as 140 individual, one unit? They have to be sold in chunks of five? Is that right?
No, no, not at all, Mr. Chair Commissioners. We can sell all of them at once to one owner. We can decide never to sell them. We can decide just to, to sell a few at a certain time.
But you could do one. So, so in the usual transaction, if, if I'm selling to Steve, I send one, he gets five units. And when it goes in the bank, those are split, so you can buy, Steve can buy one out of the bank.
Oh, I see, no, no, it doesn't work that way. And you can't disaggregate those five homes.
You have to buy him lots of five.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, you don't, again, you don't, you don't have to use all of those five. If you can only fit four, okay. If you have, if you wanna fit six, you have to buy two certificates. Um, there's other, what we call dimensional relief. A certificate, one certificate, if it's not a residential project, if it's commercial, one certificate can get you a taller building or a bigger building.
Or short-term rental.
Um, on, on the matter of rentals, one certificate will get you, uh, 10 homeownership or 10, uh, multifamily. I'm sorry, I, I think I misspoke. One certificate will get you five homeownership units and 10 multifamily or rental units.
Right.
Uh, yes. Yeah.
So just curious, so if, um, homeowner or whoever it is, right, decides to transfer and get one of these certificates, right? Like you said, it's something that happens permanent, right? So the permanent thing, so now they can't use that whatsoever. They have the certificate with, I guess, the idea that they would potentially be selling it to the developer at some point in time, right? Or, I mean, that's the concept, right?
Correct.
But, um, I mean, are, I know this is kind of a pilot program or a beginning program now, but I mean, I guess, is there an instance where an owner does that, right? Gets certificate and then never, never sells it, never does anything with it? And they just essentially lose their rights without any benefit?
Hard to say. I can just tell you what, what I know from, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. To be perfectly honest, I, I talked to one woman who, who bought them and she, she forgot that she bought them.
Nice.
Okay. If, if that's an anecdote to tell you what might happen?
Uh, and just to follow up on my first question, 'cause I, I do think you can answer, but I just wanted to make, make clear. So like, obviously you mentioned that, you know, you don't have to necessarily sell all the development rights. You can kind of piecemeal it, et cetera, all that gets kind of identified in, in a plat, right? Or maybe some sort of quitclaim deed or something like that, right? But, um, uh, so, you know, you've got some properties that are, you know, sitting on like 30% slopes or more where they can't develop anyway, right? You can still allocate those portions of the land and transfer that? As, that's kind of one of my questions I had before, right? It's like, can you transfer land that absolutely will not get developed anyway because it can't? Because you're not meeting land development code? Is that still, is that possible?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, uh, yes and no. The example you gave of slope, um, that will, that can still be counted towards the, the TDR, the acres. Um, there are other, we've just been discussing this quite a bit. The, the code does have some, uh, provisions for setbacks, uh, easements, those kinds of things. Uh, deed restrictions that already put permanent restrictions on developing the land, that doesn't count. There's other things, other things like setback, slope, um, those sorts of things. Wetlands, uh, that are already, you know, presumably or are very explicitly protected, but, um, those, those are counted towards the acres.
And I, I would just, uh, add a comment, 'cause I am a Myrdoma to my Asequia and transferring of water rights is a very, very touchy subject, you know? Um, you know, obviously, uh, la was la vida. And, you know, certainly a lot of Asequias wanna make sure to keep water rights within, you know, our traditional communities and within our Asequias ourselves. Um, and sometimes these transfer rights happen because there's, uh, Asequia doesn't necessarily have, um, you know, a, a rulebook or whatnot with respect to that. But generally and stuff, you know, if somebody is trying to transfer water rights, you're supposed to notify the Asequia and the board members for that Asequia, et cetera, and stuff like that. So I think you should make sure that legal, uh, takes that into consideration. Make sure that if any kind of consideration of a selling of water rights as part of the trans-TDR program should have some sort of notification, some sort of, uh, just more checks and balances with respect to, uh, to our Asequias here in Mexico.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I wanna, I wanna be clear that, um, the water right component of the TDRs is not giving you certificates to sell them. It's giving you certificates to retain them permanently on your land.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
We get, we, uh, the commission and, and we, it's very well understood that agua es vida, and agriculture without water is, really isn't much of agriculture. So the, the, the intent of, uh, retaining the water right in exchange for certificates is precisely for that goal, to keep the water within, with, on the land within the system.
Gotcha, that's good. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Foster, um, is, is the county open space, you know, I, I believe there was a Bobcat Ranch is a, is a imminent acquisition. I'm not sure if, is, is the county open space looking at two prices either with or without the rights? Um, because I would imagine if they acquire properties that are sending areas and they can then sever and split into the bank, that makes it permanent so that people... So, you know, I'm just wondering if, if there are, setting the prices is going to be important and will have ramifications toward the, toward the purchase price of open spaces?
Yes.
Maybe where I'm getting at? Sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I can't speak, the specific thinking around the Bobcat Ranch. I, I don't, can't speak to its eminence or not and considerations of its appraisal and with and without TD, TDRs. I have to remind myself frankly, um, the zoning, I, uh, if, if TDRs are even eligible in that particular zone, I'd be happy to get back to you.
Yeah, no, not a problem, not a problem, just a thought exercise, sorry. Any other questions from Commissioners? Thanks so much for the presentation. It was interesting and engaging.
You're very welcome. I, I look forward to, uh, being here and future presentations for, for developers who are, who are, um, who are buying them because that really gets the market, market going.
Right, and you can sit in the back and when someone needs variance, you can sell them one from the bank or, before it comes to us.
Well, thank you again, appreciate your time.
Thanks so much. Next on the agenda, petitions from the floor. Alex, you're the only one on the floor. Do you have anything? Okay. Matters from the commission. Welcome, Jose. Uh, thanks very much. Appreciate your input and, um, and enjoy yourself while you're here. Thanks. Any, any other Commissioners have anything to say? Matters from Roger, who's not here. Matters from staff.
Uh, we only have one. Just a heads up, the June 19th meeting will need to be moved to June 18th. So that month, instead of it being on a Thursday, it'll be on a Wednesday. The county offices are closed on June 19th for Juneteenth Day. So to go and give you about a two-month notice that we'll need you here on that Wednesday.
Thank you very much. The next regularly scheduled meeting is May 15th. And that's it. May I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Thank you so much.